Welcome to this meeting of Dundee City Council's Children and Families Services Committee, which is being held remotely in terms of Section 43 of the Local Governance in Scotland Act 2003. All members in attendance are able to fully participate in the meeting, which is being recorded. Should any member need to leave the meeting for any reason, can they please use the chat to advise of this? If a member loses their connection, they should make every effort to rejoin the meeting. But if this is not possible, the committee services officer will note their absence for the remainder of the meeting. If you have to leave the meeting due to a declaration of interest, you must remain out of the meeting until invited back in. Would all members please mute their microphones when not speaking to avoid background noise and turn off any smart speakers? Please start the meeting with your camera on. Your face will appear on the screen when you are speaking. If your connection is poor, you may wish to turn off your camera and see if this improves matters. If this doesn't help, then you may wish to quickly leave the meeting and rejoin. If you wish to raise a point of order, ask a question, speak on any item or move a motion or amendment, please use the chat when the relevant item is called. The convener will then invite you to speak. Would members of the press and public please not post messages in the chat? Where items are for noting or where there has been no disagreement expressed, the convener will ask for any member who has a contrary view to indicate this through the chat, otherwise the item will be agreed. Please would members not use the chat for any other purposes, as those joining the meeting by telephone cannot see the chat and therefore will not be able to follow the debate. Although we are operating in a different way, this is still a formal meeting of the committee and requires standards of conduct, behaviour and discussion are the same as in a face-to-face meeting. Standing orders will apply to the proceedings and the terms of the councillor's code of conduct will also apply in the normal way. Does any member have any queries regarding this procedure? There are no queries, convener, so I will now ask the committee services officer to take a roll call for the minute. Thank you.
Thank you, convener.
I'm here.
Councillor Alexander.
Good evening, I'm here.
Councillor Anderson.
Good evening, I'm here also.
I've had apologies from Lord Provost Campbell, Deputy Lord Provost Cordell.
Present.
Councillor Dawson.
I'm here.
Councillor El Nakla.
Here.
Councillor Flynn.
Good evening, I'm here.
Councillor Lynn.
I'm here.
I've had apologies from Bailey Roberts. Councillor Rome.
Good evening, I'm here.
Bailey Stowers.
Yes, I'm here.
Councillor Short.
Here.
Councillor Smith.
I'm here.
Thanks. Councillor Tolland.
Yeah, yeah, here.
Thank you. Bailey Keenan.
Present.
Councillor Creakshank.
Present.
Councillor Finnegan.
Councillor Finnegan's lost her connection. I've just been sent a message. She'll get in as fast as she can. Sorry.
No problem. Thank you. Councillor McHugh.
Present.
Councillor McCarvin.
Present.
Councillor Malone.
I'm here.
Councillor Scullin.
Present.
Councillor Shears.
Present.
Bailey Wright.
Present.
Bailey McPherson.
Good evening, present.
Councillor Coleman.
Good evening.
Councillor Creighton.
Present.
Councillor Duncan.
Here.
Bailey Scott.
Here.
Thank you. Mrs McVeen.
I'm here.
Thank you. Mrs Leck.
Yes, I'm here.
Mr Chohan. Mr Chohan? I'll mark Mr Chohan as absent. Mr Baxter? Mr Baxter? I'll mark his absence. Miss Barclay? Miss Barclay? I'll mark her absent. Mrs Javiet? I'll mark Miss Javiet as absent. Mr Anderson McGinnis? Mr Anderson McGinnis? I'll note his absence. And Miss Cox? Miss Cox? I will note Miss Cox's absent and that concludes the roll call.
Okay, thank you Veronica. If we could just move on to the next item of business, please?
Item one, declarations of interest. Are there any declarations?
Okay, I'm not seeing MD indicating, so clearly not. So can we move on to the next item, please?
Item two, young carers update. This report is for your information.
Okay, thank you. This is a really, I think it's a really good report and really impressive. I think first of all, I've got Councillor Duncan and then Councillor Creakshank. So Councillor Duncan, you were first.
Yeah, convener, thanks. And I'll just echo some of what you've just said there. There's a lot of really positive stuff in here. Particularly where we pleased to see the progress in supporting young carers over the past year. There's a lot of really positive pull activity and great actions in this report. So well done to all concerned. My question really was, I'd like to specifically raise the issue of supporting young carers and their families, where there are family income difficulties, particularly during the cost of living crisis, which regrettably will probably only get worse. Obviously, it's vital that young carers and their families get all the access to the financial support that they are entitled to. And therefore, I just want to ask, what's been done to support young carers and their families in this area? And what encouragement, you know, has there been with them, the council welfare rights team in particular, to make sure that people are getting what they're entitled to?
Yeah, I think I'll pass over to Mr Lloyd. I think that's the first one to go to. Glenn, is this one for you?
Yes, thank you, convener, and thank you for the question, Councillor Duncan. It's a very good question. And what I would say, or at least start with, because we have Fiona Low, one of the education officers, who's been leading on this work on the call with us as well, is that in addition to all their entitlements and their status as a young carer, children and people who fall into that category also are entitled to arrange benefits via the standard team around the child arrangements. And if via those arrangements, we're identifying concerns about income and financial inclusion, then obviously we will adopt all the usual measures to try and support them in that regard, including in relation to advice from welfare rights, advice in relation to employability, debt management, et cetera, et cetera. So just because they're young carers, that obviously doesn't exclude them from the standard ways and means of supporting them as families that might well be struggling financially in the current cost of living crisis. So I'd start with that, but I am conscious, as I say, that Fiona Low is on the call and Fiona's been doing a lot of work, not just within the schools actually, but also alongside the carers centre to support young carers. I don't know if Fiona wants to add to anything that I've said.
No, thanks Glenn. I suppose the only other thing that I would add would be that the carers centres themselves are also supporting families and are well aware and are sort of building links with families and not just young carers through their locality model and so are signposting families as well to further support if and when they become available.
Okay, thank you Fiona, thank you Glenn. Councillor Duncan, does that answer your question? Are you happy with that?
No, I mean, I'm reassured by these answers. I mean, it's really a case of making sure that people get what they're entitled to. Because I know that the world would benefit is sometimes not straightforward and people don't always know what they're entitled to. And if it's not easy to apply, it can be off putting. So anything that can be done to signpost and to ease the way would be appreciated.
Yeah, no, I think, you know, I think that's, you know, obviously common sense. They also want to support all these young people as well and make sure that, yeah, you're right, they're signposted, but also supported to help fill out some of the difficult kind of forms that, you know, sometimes even, you know, we all struggle with, so they need support as well. So absolutely agree with you on that. Councillor Creakshank, sorry, Councillor Duncan, you want to come back in there, sorry?
No, 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 sorry, I was just saying thank you, that's all.
No, it's just that danger sometimes when you're on online, you kind of speak over each other a little bit that you don't do in meetings. So apologies for that. Councillor Creakshank.
Thanks very much, convener. I just wanted to take this opportunity to express my gratitude and ongoing support for the Young Carers Programme here in Dundee. Stepping up to look after relatives when they're unwell, have issues, alcohol or substance, older or disabled, is an enormous responsibility and indeed a sacrifice for so many young carers to have been, for so many young carers to have been reached by this initiative in the past year is incredibly welcome news. And I hope that officers will be able to support an even more progress next year. I look forward to the Young Carers Action Day in 2023 and I will be sure to play my part in advocating for these young people to receive the assistance they need along with the recognition they deserve. And my question is, similar to Councillor Duncan's, about the broader support identified for families involving other agencies to lessen the burden on young carers, and has there been any crossover with Child Protection Services identified? You know, some young carers may be teetering on the brink of child protection and how we identified any. Thank you.
So first of all, thank you for your comments at the start. I think that's very much appreciated. I'm sure the carers and all the officers who have been working on this will appreciate those comments. I'll pass over to Glenn to start with and then we might want to bring Fiona in again, but Glenn.
Okay, thank you, convener, and thank you, Councillor Creakshank, for another good question. And first of all, I would emphasise the definition of a young carer that's outlined in paragraph 4.1 in the report, in that being a young carer doesn't necessarily involve the child or young person caring for their parent or carer. It may well also involve them caring for a brother, a sister, an auntie, an uncle or grandparent, et cetera, et cetera. And I say that because that's important to note in terms of not all of them, in fact, very few of them, requiring social work support in terms of any child protection concerns. And I can't quantify that at the moment in terms of numbers, but I can get a figure after the meeting on that, if that would help. Which is to say that the vast majority of young carers don't require social work support. And then in addition to support provided by the schools, by the ambassadors, by their peers, by the carers centre, as we said just a moment ago, would you also have the broader team around the child arrangements which coordinates support, not just to the child or young person, but also potentially if it's necessary to the parent or carer as well, whatever that might be? And the website that's listed in the report, the website that's noted in the report explains some of that. But that might also include, for instance, support in relation to mental health, substance use, et cetera, as and where it's necessary. We adopt a very individualised approach based on the type and level of need within a particular family. Thank you.
Okay, Councillor Tolland, you're next.
Thank you. I think it's a great report and I think reflects some of practice, especially regarding the health assessments. It's also a testimony, I think, to how well the Scottish Parliament can work for the wellbeing of people across Scotland in general. I just have a quick question and apologies if maybe you're kind of covering that. I noticed that you're obviously talking about the trauma-informed approach and how that's working through the services, which is great. Is there any data gathering of the carers who have experienced trauma? And is there any way that we can get a sense of how much trauma there is within those people?
Okay, Glenn, I'll pass back over to yourself.
Thank you, convener, and thank you for the question again. And I'm wondering if I could possibly pass that over to Fiona Low for a more detailed answer in terms of the data we currently gather and the data that we might be able to gather as well going forwards.
No, absolutely, Fiona.
Yeah, thanks. I'm thinking that the health checks in particular that are currently being undertaken by the coroner on our behalf, that's due to report sort of April time and that's the information that they're gathering there. So currently, I do have a report up until the end of September, which could be shared, I'm sure. But that only details the initial work with some of our S3 pupils. The full report should be available by April time and that will be then S3 to S6 and will give much more detail then. But absolutely, you know, that's the information that's been gathered through these health checks as well with the young people and sort of one-to-one conversations, should they wish to disclose.
Okay, are you happy with that response?
Yeah, no, I think that's great. Thanks Fiona. I think that's exactly one of the points of the health approaches and it says a reason why it's so, I think, so good and so kind of there as well. Thank you.
Okay, Councillor Short, you want to make a comment?
Yeah, I'd just like to thank the department for the really kind of open door attitude that they have. I was actually in my local police station today, meeting with the inspector and the chief inspector and they did discuss the fact that those relationships between the social work department and the police are becoming much stronger and they're having a better understanding of who has what part in the process and how they can work across the process to make it much better to help with things like trauma-formed approaches. And also, I guess, our responsibility just today, as a local councillor, we had an email from the carer centre asking us to reach out to our communities through social media to make them aware of some support that's out there. So I think, you know, we don't sit around this table and not know about the cost of living crisis and we know that it's been around for a long time, but it's almost like it's allowed us to talk more freely about it because it is more spoken about and more people have challenged us. So I think we also have that responsibility as well to make sure that everybody that we come across, they're aware of how we can support them just through ourselves and the wider auspices of the city and the services within the council. But thank you for the report.
No, thank you for your comments. With that, I don't see MD else wishing to come in at this stage. So with that, can we just approve the report? Okay, it's the MD nodding, so thank you. Okay, Veronica.
Item number three, Children and Family Service Plan 2021 to 24. This report is for your information.
Okay, another report. I'm just going to see if MD wishes to come in. Councillor Creakshank, you just beat Fraser to it. So Councillor Creakshank, I'll let you in first.
Thanks very much, convener. I welcome the latest semi-annual report on the Children and Family Service Plan. Across the city, we see lots of work being done by a tremendously dedicated team of hard-working individuals. But as I've said before in this council many times, in these tough times, among the most deprived communities in the country, there is always much more that we could be doing. I suppose in that spirit, I find myself a bit worried about when the next budget comes to pass. Given that in the last budget, there was the loss of SAC fund of 1.3 million, 22 posts lost, as well as six social workers. And supporting children and families through a period of economic recession will be challenging and costly. It is my sincere hope that this council will do everything in its power to protect these vital services and stand up to the joint austerity agenda from Westminster and Hollywood. Could I ask what impact the loss of the SAC funding for the current year has been? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'll pass over to Mr Fleming.
Thank you, convener, and thanks very much, Councillor Creakshank, for the question. We are working currently very hard with our head teachers and other partners, including Education Scotland's team advisor, to make sure that we ascertain the impact of all of our attainment Scotland funds, which includes the pupil equity funding and also the strategic equity funding which you referred to. And we'll be using these, this data qualitative and quantitative to inform our plans for next session. And Councillor Creakshank will commit to, as we have previously committed to, bringing that plan back to this committee as well. In terms of different types of data and impact, their data is published at different times of the year. And again, I think as the convener has mentioned before, we'll be looking to bring back different aspects of that attainment, including teams that may be published later this month in the broad general education, the ASL data, curriculum for excellence data. So we'll commit to bringing that back early next year as well.
Okay, you happy with that, Councillor Creakshank?
Yeah, I just hope that... Sorry, I've lost my place here. We talk about what we cannot afford to spend, but this is something that we can't, cannot afford to cut. Thank you.
No, thank you for that. Bailey McPherson, you're next.
Thanks, convener. I have a question around the information in 4.1.4 regarding learning and attainment. And in particular, the comments regarding the senior phase. And it indicates in that, that following an in-school analysis, the chief education officer, who's obviously on the meeting today, is undertaking one-to-one senior phase attainment review meetings with each of our secondary schools. Now, I'm very aware of the huge efforts that my own local secondary school, St Johnstone Harbour, has put into supporting senior phase pupils. And I'm just really wondering if, what the background to this in-school analysis was, what's come out of that? Now, there are particular issues about, for example, differing levels of support across the school state at senior phase or any good practice that takes place in particular schools that could, you know, be rolled out across the estate. And I'm just really wondering what the issues are regarding senior phase attainment.
Okay, Mr Fleming.
Thank you very much, Bailey McPherson. So senior phase attainment are many different measures, as you know, related to senior phase attainment and different schools perform differently. Again, I know from previous conversations that we're very familiar with that too. So what we are doing is exactly what you're talking about, Bailey McPherson, is to get a better idea of what the input, what schools are doing to get different aspects of attainment that are stronger, perhaps that needs development, so that we can link and share this practice up between schools. And it's also so that we can get a better idea of how we can support our schools with their development needs. Again, given my relative newness to the role. So these discussions are still ongoing, Bailey McPherson. So for example, I'm just, have left Grove Academy this afternoon. So with those who are taking place late November and over December, that will help inform our strategic plan moving forward to make sure that we're targeting support and where it's going to make the biggest difference. So schools will really look at the analysis and the insight. The government benchmarking tool was updated late September. So that was after we were at committee in September. So schools undertake their subject-by-subject analysis to see how they perform and compare that to virtual comparators, sort of pulling all of that analysis to help inform our plan moving forward.
Thanks very much for that. That's reassuring to hear and I'm glad the department's being proactive. The one thing, and I'm aware of, and that's attainment levels in relation to day release at college. And I assume that the, Mr Fleming, that the department is engaging with Dundee and Angus College in that respect. Because I think there's a way to go on that, if I'm being perfectly honest.
Thanks, Bailey McPherson. You're quite a mixed picture in terms of attainment and achievement as our partnerships is across different measures. And yes, we actually have a short working, short life working group, Bailey McPherson, that we've got four engagements, again, with a number of partners, representations from all of our schools in terms of leadership levels, DHTs, HTs and others. And that short life working group concludes in January and will have a report that will help inform our partnership with the college moving forward.
That's very reassuring and I'm grateful for your response, Mr Fleming.
Thank you.
Okay, no, thank you, Bailey McPherson. Mrs Leck, you're next.
I would just like to ask about the quality of opportunity in relation to attainment in the senior phase. I'm kind of linking this with the opportunities that young people have in Morgan Academy, when every person's been allocated either a laptop or their computer or whatever type of technology it is. If that's not spread across the city yet, but in the meantime, how do we ensure that there is equality of opportunity so that it feeds into the raising of attainment in the other schools?
Okay, Mr Fleming, do you want to answer that?
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs Leck, for your question. Yeah, quality of opportunity is very important as is equity of outcome. And we're using Morgan as a pilot, obviously, to inform practice that may hopefully have an impact on attainment. But I would say that in individual schools where it is a challenge for young people to have a technology, and our schools are supporting, using PAF and the DOD, other funding at these families to make sure they have access to the technology to support and enhance learning and teaching. So all of our schools do have a standard of technology to support learning and teaching and is an enhancement at Morgan as we trial that to see what the impact of that is. And of course, there is additional funding coming later in the parliamentary term for that to be rolled out across the learning estate.
Okay, are you happy with that, Mrs Leck?
Yeah, but I still think it's a concern. I'm aware, as Paul's saying, regarding every school trying to enhance the base level that they have, but it's still a concern that if you're in one area of the city, then you have a much greater enhancement than if you're in another area of the city. So I think it's one, you know, that we have to look to and see what we can do very quickly to make sure that in other areas of the city, the young people get the same opportunity of enhancement as well as technology.
Yeah, no, thank you for that. And I think as Mr Fleming said, we'll also, we'll look at what's happening in Morgan in the pilot there to see what we can then roll out to the rest of the city and make sure it all works and it is that equity for MD that you talk about. With that, I don't see MD else wishing to come in. So can this report be agreed? We're seeing a nodding. So I think that's Children and Families. So thank you all for your attendance tonight.
Thank you, convener. The next committee is the City Development Committee. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to City Development Committee. Can I just move on and go to Veronica, please?
Item one, declarations of interest. Are there any declarations?
Do you have any declarations to see then? I don't see any, Veronica. Let's just move on, please.
Item number two, Civic Government Scotland Act 1982, street names, new residential development at Ballending Road, Dundee. This note is for your approval.
Any comments or questions? I don't see any comments or questions. So thank you. We'll take that as agreed. Thank you very much. Next, please, Veronica.
Item number three, variation of waiting restrictions 2022. This report is for your approval.
Just seeks approval to varied traffic regulations in four wards at 12 locations across the city. Sorry, I see Councillor Creighton's first came in with a declaration of interest. Can maybe do that first before we go to questions? Oh, sorry. We'll just move on.
No, so sorry, that was me. I couldn't get in. I couldn't get into the team's chat. Yeah, no, I'm just declaring my financial interest in item six. My employer is one of the contractors listed. So I won't take part on vote or on that item. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Can we get that noted, Veronica, please? And we'll just move on to Councillor Duncan.
Thanks, convener. Just a quick comment really of one of gratitude really over the removal of the now redundant loading being church streets. I know it's a small thing, but the amount of residents that like these things, you know, because parking space is at a premium. And although the report says that the business of which it pertained has sort of changed, actually it's been demolished and doesn't exist. So well done, officers.
Okay, thank you very much. And Mr Press will pass it on, I'm sure. Councillor Creighton, you're back in with a question this time, I hope.
Thank you, convener. Can I thank officers for taking forward the proposals affecting the Weston Ward? In particular, Bailey McPherson and I have raised the Marchfield Road junction and Elliot Road junction over a period of time now. So we're very grateful to see these being promoted. And if approved tonight, can I ask officers realistically how quickly, subject to no objections and final committee approval, when we can expect to see these proposals introduced on the ground?
Thank you. Mr McNorton, would you like to give some time scales to this, please?
Yeah, thank you, convener. Thank you for the question, Councillor Creighton. It's generally nine months without objection and 12 months with objections before we can conclude the orders. And that's due to a variety of statutory public noticing and consultation processes to go through and completion of the actual programme if it works on the ground.
Okay, thanks for that. I think you got that, Michael, nine months. Okay, thanks for that. I think you got that, Mike, Michael, nine months approximately?
Yep, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Your volume's a bit low, Eun, it's a difficulty here, sorry. See no other questions or comments, so I'll take that as agreed. Thank you very much. Next one, Veronica, please.
Item number four, Flood Risk Management Scotland Act 2009, Cycle Two Local Flood Risk Management Plan. This report is for your approval.
Thank you. This item advises on the progress being made towards Cycle Two statutory local flood risk management plan and the actions identified to reduce the risk of flood risk. Angus Council are the lead authority for the Teestery and Montrose Basin Plan, and this reflects both on the Brody Ferry, Dundee and national actions to be incorporated within the plan. I see councillor Coleman, you were in first, please.
Thank you, Mr convener. In terms of localised flooding on local streets, which I'm sure we've all heard about after recent rains, in particular community engagement referred to in page 27, can I point out the extent of community concerns about the number of blocked street drains and the declining frequency of routine cleaning out of these? I understand from road maintenance partnership, this is now around every 24 months. The roads' maintenance partnership does a very good job with its resources available to it, but should thought not be given to additional resource to enable more frequent cyclical maintenance?
Don't think we'll get anybody here from the RMP to comment, but possibly Mr McNorton might be able to help if he's available.
Yes, thank you, convener, and thanks for the comment. We undertake a programme of cyclic cleaning, and in addition to that, we also undertake reactive cleaning to reports which identify both through our regular inspection programme and also from public reports as well about block gullies. In addition to that, we've got an increased regime that we have for flood location prone sites. So in conjunction, that's the full programme of gully cleaning. That's quite reflective of the national picture as well. So this is very much when we benchmark against other local authorities, this is the sort of norm for cleansing frequencies. What we do find on these flood events is that the first flush, particularly with the high intensity storm events, like the recent one, which is we're waiting for the flood return period back from that, but it's likely to be of the magnitude of over one in a hundred year flood event, it has a tendency to wash out a lot of material, debris, particularly in the autumnal leaf fall. The first flush goes down and can block the gully grate and covers sometimes the pots as well, depending on the road layout. So what can be clean, empty gullies before the flood event, after the flood event recedes? This is why they look like they're blocked afterwards. But we do have quite a good maintenance regime with record keeping, so we do keep a good track of problem locations to both siltation and flooding.
Thanks, Eun. Councillor Coleman, is that okay?
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Bailey Keenan, you're next, please. You're on mute, Kevin.
I would echo the comments that have been made by councillor Coleman in relation to gully cleaning, because I have reported a considerable amount as I've went out walking and identified some of these areas, and some of them aren't too far away from the flood areas that we've seen in the last week. I suppose this report in itself is very general when it makes reference to the location being Dundee or Brody Ferry. And I think it would be good if officers are prepared to bring back a report that gets into more detail, that starts to give the locations where flooding is happening on a regular, and the action plan to take care of that. I mean, I've been the councillor for Adler for a long time, and I think now about every three months, we're hitting that one in a hundred year event. And when it comes to Craig Isle this time, Craig Isle was inaccessible by an emergency vehicle for a long, long period of time, because both Angus was closed off, and so was the Strathmartin Road access. So I really think that we should be looking to bring back a report that details the work that we are likely to do to address it and give people a better understanding of what's going on in relation to flood defences, rather than Dundee being a location, and we'll have some community engagement. We really need to do more. So I'm looking for a comment for the officers as to what their intention is to bring back to us.
Okay, thank you for that. This is a statutory local flood risk management plan, and I think with the Hydrometric Authority of SEPA overseeing what's going on, I think that'd be them would probably lead on that. But I'll bring in Gary Brady, I think, is on the call. Maybe Gary should be able to help answer the question.
Good afternoon, thank you. I understand your point, Bailey Keenan, and it's something that we would look to do is to review where flood locations are and prioritise those for action. So it's something I'm quite happy to take forward and give information on where planned and intended works would be to alleviate flood issues.
Can I maybe ask what sort of timescale that would be, given that, you know, shopkeeper in Adler that comes to me on a regular, and I know, I think we helped out with your body more sandbags the last time, but, you know, what are we doing? And my real fear is some of these areas that floods are, that people tend not to, not, because of the cost of living crisis, people are tending not to insure. My real fear is that people will not have insurance for their homes. And, you know, that, that level of flooding will be devastating with the point of view of damage that it'll do to their homes, whether that's sort of flooring or otherwise, and just damage to goods. So, you know, I really think we need, as a matter of urgency, some level of report. So a timescale would be good.
I think I'd probably bring in Mr Presswood to maybe ask if officers can bring this forward, and maybe work with SEPA to actually provide that information you're looking for. Mr Presswood, would that be reasonable?
Yeah, absolutely. Very happy, because I think we're aware from communications from the various elected members that flooding of roads during this kind of event is a very significant issue. I think Mr McNorton's highlighted some of the causes for that, but I think documenting that and being clear about the types of interventions which are done and any other potential interventions would be helpful. In terms of the timescale, I would need to consult the team, but I would imagine something citywide would take a minimum of three months.
Thank you for that. We'll move on to councillor Duncan, please.
Thanks, convener. Some ties in with what the two previous speakers have raised. I mean, I'm glad that there is, if you look at page 24, there is to be an assessment of areas, you know, that are at risk of flooding, ponding, et cetera. And my question really is that, and I'm sure members from other wards will be able to say the same. I have, I suppose, over the years, a list of the usual suspects in terms of spots that I know fine flow well will flood, and they almost always do. The Queen Street outside the Occidental, for example, Dalhousie Roads, I could go on, but I won't, because my question is really, although it's good to see that, you know, we're going to identify these places, is there going to be a role and an opportunity for elected members such as ourselves and possibly the public, the transport networks, et cetera, to actually feed in and identify where we think the problem areas are? Because I have to say that in recent years, I'm aware in my own ward of spots that are becoming a problem which never used to be.
Well, I'm not so sure about feeding on that, because we've got SEPA oversee this with the local authorities. But I'll bring in, I probably, Mr McNorton might be able to help that one, probably. Do we feedback on any flood issues we do have in the city, Eun?
Yeah, thank you very much, convener, and thank you for the question, councillor Duncan. We do have very extensive information in terms of the flood event record keeping, and we do keep a record of all the flood events. We've got quite a good basis of information, but we certainly welcome any additional information when we're going through that process, that people can feed in with local knowledge. So we'll certainly better that, I might, when we're doing that exercise.
Okay, thank you, councillor Duncan.
Okay, no, I'm reassured to hear that, otherwise I think it'd be something of a missed opportunity. So thanks.
Okay, no. Bailey Scott, please.
Thanks, convener. Some of my questions have been dealt with, but I'd like to make a couple of comments if I can, please. First of all, in relation to street sweeping, I know, I know it's done now every two years, but it used to be done twice a year. Every location was visited by the gully sucker twice a year, so that's had an impact. And I also think that the debris that spills up in the channels which washes into the gullies at, when there's a storm event, perhaps wouldn't happen so much if we had more regular sweeping of the gullies, of the channels in the first place, stopping them washing into the gullies. I've been identifying hotspots in my ward over the years and had site meetings at various locations with council officers and Scottish Water. And for the last decade and a half, I've been getting told that, well, these will all be looked at and dealt with when the catchment study has been completed. And we still seem to be no further forward in any of these hotspots. And now with funding likely not to be coming forward for the cycle two timeframes, I think I'm really looking for an assurance from the department that action will still be taken to deal with the hotspots that are identified through the report that Mr Presswood has said is going to come back.
Good, thank you. I think you've touched upon, as you said, all your points have been raised and questions answered. But again, Mr Presswood will probably come back in a second. But I think it's probably worthwhile, you've touched upon the funding and the projects. It's probably worth the committee being aware where exactly we are with the cycle one and cycle two with regards to the funding models especially, and maybe currently stand with that. So maybe run Gary in, just to maybe give us a wee sort of roundup of where we are currently with that, Gary, and the fact that no projects have been cancelled, but the funding is being reviewed.
Yeah, that's, that's correct, convener. Certainly in Dundee's position, cycle one has been entirely deployed. So that saw the Riverside Drive, Central Waterfront and Brody Ferry schemes brought to fruition and completed. The picture across Scotland's different, there's a, there's a significant backlog of cycle one schemes that haven't reached construction yet, partly through construction inflation, and that's had a knock-on effect with, with cycle two. So currently Scottish Government and COSLA are working together to reprioritise both cycle one schemes and look at affordability of cycle two. I have to say, I haven't heard anything back recently about a decision timescale for that, but I do know that we'll see an element of reprioritisation of cycle one and, and cycle two. So really it's a case of trying to engage with COSLA where at all possible to seek some assurances on future funding.
That's perfect. Thanks very much, Gary. Thanks for the input there. Sorry, Mr Presswood, can you come back and just answer Billy Scott's point?
Thanks very much, convener. In terms of the current frequency of cleaning, I can give committee the assurance that there will be no reduction in that. Members, I think, are aware that budgets are very constrained, both within environmental services and within the roads' maintenance area. But that the, other than the impact of construction, there hasn't been, oh, sorry, construction inflation, there hasn't been any reduction in expenditure there. So we will maintain the current service, but we are unable at this time to increase the frequency.
Okay, thank you. Bailey Scott? Okay, thanks very much. Billy McPherson, please.
Yeah, I would just really, in light of the comments from councillor Coleman, Duncan, and Bailey's Keenan and Scott, I would just echo the sentiments. Like Bailey Scott, I do recall when I was first on the council, the frequency of cyclical maintenance in relation to street drains was indeed twice a year. And here we are, we have far more one in a hundred events, frankly, they're far more frequent now than they were at that time. And whilst I appreciate the assurance from Mr Presswood that no further reduction, the harsh reality is that we have reduced over the years, and I don't think that's been necessarily a good thing. I would say, however, in making this comment, we all have, as councillor Duncan, I think, alluded to, we all have the off-repeated sites in our ward, the Balmoral Rose Angle, if I got a pound for every email or phone call I have made regarding that. But I do have to say, the Road Maintenance Partnership's response has been pretty exemplary, if I'm being perfectly, perfectly fair. I think they're fast at reacting to particular issues. But I would make the point, and I think it is, as we move to increasing one in a hundred events, I think it's really important that we give further thought to the frequency of things like this. But I am grateful to Mr Presswood for the commitment for the further report, and we look forward to reading that in due course.
Yeah, thank you for that. Thanks for your comments about RMP, because I think the RMP do a fantastic job, and I think that'd be helpful. If, again, if anybody has any issues, certainly report it back, and I think that's the message from this evening. I take no more questions or comments, so I'll take this report as agreed. Thank you very much. Move on. Veronica, please.
Item number five, City Centre Shopfront Improvement Pilot Scheme. This report is for your approval.
Thank you. This item seeks approval to introduce a pilot project that will support shopfront improvements in the city centre area. The pilot projects will focus initially on Union Street, excuse me, given the ongoing programme of improvements works in the street and the key link it has between the city centre and the central waterfront and the railway station itself. The pilot project itself will be grant support to shop owners and will be supported from the approved city investment fund. Councillor Short, please.
Thank you, convener. As a city centre councillor, and you'd be in part of city development at the time, you'll know that during the spaces for people, there was quite a lot of working in the background to bring in UNESCO and working really closely with all the stakeholders in the street. And I see this as the sort of the next step with regards to that street. You can buy everything from a record to a Rolex to a rock cake, but they're all very much different shopfronts. And I think we can all safely say that what has happened in Reform, in Reform Street, sorry, in Union Street has, has been really well received, not just within the city, but also the wider Scottish public. You see it often as one of the real successes. What I also like about this report is it's coming back to committee before it actually is decided. So it does give us the opportunity, and also there's provisos in it. So if you're already the Royal Hotel, and maybe I'm showing my age again, but, I mean, that, when I came in six years ago, that's when the scaffolding was up, and they made a huge improvement on that entrance to, to Union Street. And so to have seen the progress that's gone through in that one connecting street has been really quite transformational in the last number of years. And I would not like to see a situation where we didn't concentrate. There's nothing worse than, and I've said it before, so I'll just say it again, fur coat and knee drawers when it comes to the things that we do. We should do them properly, and we should do them with the view that enhancing, and then little and often, and move on to the next, because it gives us the opportunity to showcase and stand, stand ahead and show what we can do, rather than just making decisions and not doing them properly. So I'm really, really pleased to see this, and I'm looking forward to seeing how we can change the street. Although I think my suggestion to change it to Independence Street is maybe a wee bit further along than I might hope for, but one day, you never know, I might get there. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for your comments. And I have to apologise firstly to Billy McPherson, the names jump up on the screens at different points, so my apologies for that. You did come in first, and I'm sure councillor Short wouldn't mind getting in before you for comments, so thanks for that. Billy McPherson?
Yeah, I, whilst welcoming the principle of shopfront improvements, our group's just a little bit surprised that it's Union Street that's been chosen. We get the point about the links between the station and the city centre, how close it is to the station. And whilst we support any proactive proposal to improve shopfronts in the city centre, if I'm being perfectly frank about it, we get far more concerns about the state of the Murray Gate and Reform Street than we ever do about Union Street, which actually has a very vibrant feel about it. And I actually made a point, having read the report, I made a point of actually having a wee wander up Union Street. There's actually at present only two empty units. It doesn't look like a street that's, that's struggling. I'm not suggesting for the moment we can't always improve in particular streets. However, then there are challenges in particular. Now, just going to highlight the Murray Gate, because as we're all aware, not only are there a number of, in fact, quite longstanding empty units in the Murray Gate, and there is welcome news in relation to Tesco coming back into the Murray Gate, which is, which is welcome. But in a way, one step forward and two steps back, in the sense of Martin Spencer obviously relocating completely away from the Murray Gate, and also the sad news in relation to HSBC Bank, which all frankly is next door to which all frankly is next door to Queer Tesco are coming in. So I suppose I have a question for officers, and that really is what the rationale for uh, I don't want to wish to appear churlish. Anything is um that that helps our city centre i- is a welcome thing. But the the point fundamentally is, what was the rationale for um this? And could this not have been um looked at in relation to streets where we get actually more concerns about the um what appears to many people to be the declining um state? And I'm particularly talking about um the Murray Gate and um and Reform Street. And can I ask that what are the proposals on the part of officers in terms of recommendations coming forward uh in relation to rolling this out to these streets? Um um assuming we agree this particular report uh tonight, what sort of timescale are we talking about?
Okay, thank you for your questions. Uh Mr. Presswood, I probably just bring you straight in here. That's probably easier.
Many thanks, convenor. Um many thanks, Bailey McPherson, for the for the question. And first of all, the um the the longer term future of the scheme, it is a fairly well trodden path. We have done this kind of initiative before and we do know it is a successful intervention in terms of improving the public realm. Uh and um if supporting the 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 footfall and that in its in turn um supporting shopkeepers. Uh I I think I should distinguish between uh the initiatives which would be aimed at filling vacant shops and initiatives aimed at improving the public realm. And the proposal for the pilot scheme focused initial on initially on Union Street um is to improve the environment. And and one of the reasons that officers have um proposed to you tonight to focus uh the um comparatively small um budget for this on a limited uh scale of uh 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 a project um is because it will have the maximum impact. Uh there are only about probably five or six shop fronts in Union Street which are in a condition that do require this. The rest are in 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 fairly good condition. If we can bring up every shop front to that same condition, it will complement the likely Sustran um funding for the permanent pedestrianisation. So you create a large impact um i- if you concentrate it in a small area. The second issue is one of ownership, and our understanding is that many of the shop fronts in Union Street are locally owned, so we have the ability to engage fairly readily with the shop owner and the 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 trader, most of whom are independent. And if you look at a larger street such as the Murray Gate, the majority of the properties will be owned um at a national level um by companies that we don't have a relationship with. I think the 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 next point is the cost of the intervention. We're proposing uh an initial um pilot scheme budget of one hundred and fifty thousand pounds. Typically, for a small shop, the cost of an intervention might be anywhere between twenty and forty thousand pounds. So there's quite a limited number of shops that can be supported through this. And i- i- if you looked at the Murray Gate, I suspect because the much larger frontages, uh that budget of one hundred and fifty thousand pounds could be taken up by one medium sized unit on its own. Um and that may not necessarily secure a tenant for that vacant unit. Um so that's the reasons that officers have proposed that. Um we do believe that in in bringing something to the table, it helps demonstrate to Sustran that we are putting match funding into the street. Clearly, Sustran can only fund the the road based activity to support and enhance pedestrianisation. But this allows us to demonstrate that the council are bringing match funding in uh to support this. I think the final point that you raised um was what our plans for the future would be. We would certainly like to roll this out um citywide. We need to ensure that it has an impact. Uh but the principal thing we need to do is to bring more shoppers into the city centre. And really, that's the final reason we've targeted Union Street. It is the most prominent linkage of all the the streets leading down from the the High Street Nethergate. It's the most prominent linkage down to the V and A, down to the waterfront. There are other streets which we would like to to focus on in terms of signage such as um Castle Street. Uh but at the moment, uh our proposal is to focus initially on Union Street to review the success of that scheme and then bring back a report, as councillor Short has said, um exploring the success and considering options for the future.
Thank you for that. Billy McPherson?
Yeah, thanks for that. I get all that. The point I make, and I take uh Mr. Presswood's point about the difference between, if you like, the occupied public realm and improving that, which is what you're seeking to do here in Union Street, and trying to do something about improving the look of empty units, which is obviously a a linked but slightly different issue. Now, suppose my my follow up question to Mr. Presswood. Uh as you walk along the Murray Gate, it's quite obvious a couple of units, and actually one is quite a small unit. And I understand the point of ownership and some of it is not local. I I get I get all that. But I'm aware of uh the initiatives taken by another local authority elsewhere in 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 central Scotland uh in relation to trying to improve the look of actually just empty units. Um um and and quite frankly, if you took down some ho- uh some wood uh of a the front, graffiti wood, I might add, of the front of one unit in the Murray Gate. Um and I appreciate it's not in the council's ownership. Um y- you could uh you could actually improve, without actually it being occupied, you could actually improve the quite frankly, down that hill look at it. And I'm just really wondering what proactive engagement we have with um owners in relation to trying to ensure that where there's an empty unit, we at least make it look respectable rather than this graffitied, boarded up horribleness that so many constituents complain about.
I absolutely agree with your comments, and that's why I've asked officers over a period of time to actually try and work out with the owners and try and find a a compromise to what they the way they leave their buildings when they become vacant and try and work with the local authority. But I'll bring Mr. Presswood in just to uh give more information on that.
Um I I I think we are keen to do more of that, as the convenor says. Uh the the principal issue is you yourself have raised, Bailey McPherson, is securing the consent of owners. Uh we simply can't go in and start erecting vinyls over blank win- uh windows uh or removing wood um and restoring um sort of the the glass window that was there before because um the owners uh could challenge the council's right to do that. And obviously, if there were any damage either while we were doing the works or as a result of us removing um wooden panelling, uh then we would be liable um for any damage that occurred. Um having said that, we have done a number of initiatives aimed at removing graffiti uh walls and and bringing them uh back to a standard through the use of um uh murals. And there's been a very successful initiative, which I know a number of members are aware of in the uh in in one of the alleyways leading into the the Keeler Centre. Um so we will continue to explore initiatives like that. I think that there's a key message to um to owners of these properties that if they want to work in partnership with the council, the budget for this type of uh two D intervention with graphics or repainting or whatever, it's much, much less than a permanent change uh around the shopfront um improvement. And we're very happy to receive approaches uh and to have dialogue with the owners of these properties.
Thank you very much. I should I should also say that the city centre manager is actually doing a fantastic job currently to try and make contact with many vacant holders and also the existing shooting businesses to make sure we can try and keep the the city centre as clean as possible on all the streets. Uh just any quick comment, Billy?
Yeah, all I was gonna say, I'm grateful to uh uh Mr. Presswood for his 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 follow up uh comments, which are helpful. I simply make the point now, I'll not prolong this, I'm conscious other people won't in. We really are going to have to give a good deal of thought to the Murray Gate, particularly given two uh significant units going to become uh empty in addition to those that are already empty. And um you know, I think, you know, um uh all hands to the pump on that particular one because we want to ensure the Murray Gate looks to be vibrant in the future.
I think we're all focused on the same project, to be completely fair, to make sure the city centre and district centres are actually brought up to a really good standard. So thank you for that. Uh councillor Skullin, I see you have an amendment. I'll maybe ask the officers to put the amendment out, and I've got a few more questions. I'll come to them first and come back to you if that's okay. So I'm gonna get the amendment put out. Veronica, please, to like the members. And uh, sorry, councillor Krugshank, I see you've got your hand up. Uh you want to make a comment or question?
Um question, please.
Okay.
Um, okay. Firstly, uh can I assume that local residents and business owners will be consulted on the look and the feel of these new permanent designs? And secondly, I've expressed concerns previously um regarding the the ve- the displacement of vehicles onto Whitehall Crescent and Whitehall Street. Uh in particular, Whitehall Street is more congested than ever. Um with delivery vehicles, cars and buses all compete to squeeze themselves through such a limited space. And I've been there myself on many occasions. Uh before any more work is done to progress, um when can we expect the council to finally unveil proposals for mitigating the effects on other streets in the area? Thank you.
Thank you for that, uh Mr. Presswood.
Um to to address the first point, convenor, um the consultation will be done through the statutory pr- planning process. Obviously, um there will be engagement with the uh the tenants and the shop owners um at the pre formal stage, but the formal consultation will require to be through planning. Um because Union Street is a conservation, it's part of the central area, conservation area. And I think all of the properties are grade B listed, certainly the majority of them are. So there does require to be formal planning consents put in place um for these types of interventions. So hopefully, uh a number of opportunities for local businesses and people to be involved there. Um in terms of the displacement issue, um I may ask Mr. McNorton to come in from a uh a transportation perspective. But I think the key uh message is that Sustran have provided funding in order to reduce the number of vehicle movements uh wi- within the city centre and encourage people to use active travel. Um so I think simply relocating car parking from one street to another would not be consistent with the approach that Sustran are are taking. And I think that we in uh as a council wish to take. The key priority for us is keeping car parking on the fringes of the city centre and creating a better public realm which encourages more people to uh to come in and enjoy the the quality of environment and the air quality by removing traffic from the city centre. But convenor, if that's okay, I'll ask Mr. McNorton to come in.
Yeah, please, um Mr. McNorton, please.
Yeah, thank you, convenor. Uh thank you for the question, councillor Kuchan. The um the the ease of travel by private car um around particularly within the inner ring road um for the city centre. Um if we do measures to make it easier to drive, what we're doing is we're enabling it. And um by enabling it, we'll increase it. So the objective is to decrease the number of private vehicles. And as Mr. Presswood says, it's to keep them on the fringes in the cities, in the strategically located small story car parks and other ones on the city centre fringes. Uh what we do want to do is we want to make sure that the alternative options are there, and we're taking forward proposals for active travel routes, bus priority corridors and other measures as well, like things like pedestrianisation for Union Street. Um to make sure that these alternative forms of travel um get the priority over private car use. And we try and move through incentivisation the private car use um to the fringes of the city centre.
Thank you. Councillor Krugshank? Sorry.
Sorry, I I accept the responses from officer. Um I mean, I'm I'm to- I'm coming from an essential car user point of view. Uh and I've had horrendous problems trying to get off uh Whitehall Street when there's buses uh and cars trying to converge from the same same direction. So, yeah, okay, thanks.
Thanks very much for that. Uh I think I'll go back. I think it's something, I'm just gonna jump in and say this actually. And within the report, we do actually uh make reference to the city centre strategic investment plan. And within that plan, which we all passed on the thirty first of October, we did say that there was actually going to be targeting key building frontages, including Union Street, Murray Gate and Reform Street. I appreciate that Murray Gate's been mentioned by Billy McPherson, but we've got to start off as a pilot, and I think that's the important part of this whole thing. This is a pilot. And it's an aspirational pilot to see where to make improvements and then take it across the city centre, as Mr. Presswood has touched upon. Uh I'll go back to councillor Skullin, please, for your amendment. And you want to speak to it?
Hi, yes, uh everyone will have had it by now. So um I move as an amendment that the committee approves the recommendations in the report. Um but that the pilot project should cover the whole of Dundee City Centre rather than just focusing on Union Street to help improve the streetscape and deliver our city as a tourist destination of choice. And I agree with what Bailey McPherson has said, uh and I have to sort of disagree with what Mr. Presswood said because I believe that the impact would be better seen across the rest of the city centre. Because do we really want visitors to the city to come up Union Street with the beautiful planter, seats, beer gardens, painted road, brand new shop fronts into the rest of the centre? The report uh states, as uh councillor Flynn has just said, that about the draft plan and um including Union Street, Murray Gate and Reform Street. So why is a pilot concentrated on Union Street when the other streets are in much more need of time and investment? I understand that this is dependent on funding, but there are other streets in far more need than this one, and we have in reality a very small city centre. Union Street's already been revitalised, with, I think, only one empty unit at the moment. This money would be better spent on other streets within the city centre that have many for lease signs up. So again, why is this money not being allocated to other streets? And there's also been no consultation with the shops on Union Street. So do we even know if it's what they want? The report states that Union Street's a key street connecting the High Street to the waterfront. So are other streets. Having recently had to close my own business in the city centre on Castle Street, I'm confident in saying that this will anger many businesses that already feel really left behind. Myself and others attended meetings and were approached by various people within the council approximately ten years ago stating that Castle Street, Crichton Street and Union Street would be all treated as main thoroughfares to Slasher Gardens and the waterfront. As we can clearly see, this hasn't happened. The other streets have been left behind without even signage directing people down these streets to the waterfront. On Castle Street alone, in the last year, we have lost five businesses with six empty units now in a street of fourteen with others barely holding on. A shop, which is in fact owned by Dundee City Council, was left for over ten years to go to such ruin that it costs tens of thousands of pounds to make it available for lease. Commercial Street has ten empty units up for lease. Some with smashed windows, filthy interior and exteriors. If these streets were more attractive, we might get some more interest in these units. So I have to ask again why? Why when the rest of the city centre is struggling is there's insistence on concentrating on one street? Dundee City Centre is more than one street. Could that money not be better spent on improving the public realm in other streets, as stated in the strategic plan? Finals on empty shops, which I know has been mentioned before that you can't just go and stick up finals. But again, with discussion with owners, it might be something that they would want to do. And help with disabled access for shops, help with shop fronts for new startups and empty units. I feel that any one of these suggestions would be a better use of the money.
Okay, thank you. Do you have a a second though?
I do, yes.
I'm not sure. Is that historic that? Sorry, councillor Krugshank.
Yeah, I second the motion. Um I've been approached by um a a couple of people from Union Street, and they know nothing about about the plans. Uh and they're quite happy with that, with our shop fronts where they are and don't need any investment. I mean, I remain broadly supportive of the longer term aspirations to improve Union Street, but not to the detriment of the other streets, as mentioned by uh Bailey McPherson and councillor Skullin. Um I just think we we need to be putting the money where it is needed, not where it's not needed. Um and we've seen the closure of many businesses. I often get complaints with trouble at birth or further in the field to do their shopping. Um so, yeah, I second the motion. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh oh, sorry, councillor Alexander, I think I missed you earlier on, which isn't a good thing for the leader, I suppose. Uh gonna move on to yourself, please.
Thanks very much, convenor. I don't mind at all. Um so thanks, everyone, for their contribution so far. I think there's a helpful dialogue here, but I think it it's important to reiterate, I think, a couple of points have already been made. So first of all, we've already agreed the principle of continuing investment in Union Street as part of a wider strategy, not just in the consideration of the report that you mentioned, convenor, which was only before us last month, which very specifically at four point twelve referenced early wins and uh Union Street, which was unanimously agreed by everybody in the council. I didn't hear any of the voices of dissent at that point in time. Um but more than that, it's also important to remember that we've considered uh an array of reports which seek to achieve positive outcomes in the city centre. So and we've had specific updates on Union Street, which again have went through unanimously. Um and I think it's important to to reiterate that. We've also deployed resources that we've obtained through national means and locally. So there's been a a number of ways in which we've tried to help retail through the district shopping fund, which again was through conversations with the opposition and the administration, the city improvement fund, the city investment fund. And of course, there's other funding streams that whilst not um directly referenced as city improvement funds, for example, at for example, active ta- travel and pedestrianisation can be utilised for that purpose. So I think it's really important to be very clear, nobody's losing sight of the wider city centre. This is a pilot project with a very limited scope and a very limited resource. Now, whether or not you agree with everything um Mr. Presswood had to say in terms of the the approach that's being taken, I think we can all agree that hundred and fifty thousand pounds spread across the entire city centre will not touch the sides and will not make a significant uh change in terms of the issues that um both the mover of the motion and others have mentioned. It may well result in one shop front being improved in the money gate, one shop front on Reform Street and one shop front on, say, Crichton Street, for example. Nobody would notice that, and actually, that would make it incredibly difficult to ascertain the success or otherwise of the pilot. The whole point of the pilot is to help inform the strategy going forward and, more importantly, to leverage in external resources to support the wider activity and wider ambition within the city centre improvement fund. Uh I would reference one other thing, which is a national piece of work that I've been involved in through the Scot- Scottish Cities Alliance, which is the City Centre Recovery um Task Force, which involves all eight of Scotland's cities and the Scottish Government. We managed to uh obtain resource through that by identifying both the challenges and showcasing what we could do. That was taken forward and we managed to leverage the resource because each city came forward with a range of pilot activities to show how they might start to turn the tide on the, you know, damage that's been done to city centres. The length and breadth of this country, not because of the actions of our city or uh the council and any other individual factor, but because of external factors that are having a real um, you know, intracting effect on retail right now. So I I think we've got not got to lose sight of what this report is about. This isn't talking about trying to spread the jam very, very thinly across an entire city centre. And I go back to the point I made earlier, I don't think it would touch the sides. And I think we'd all be left at the end of that process going, what did we get for our money? If we target the resource in the right way, then we could uh potentially use that as leverage to open up other avenues. I think if we take the approach that's been suggested, I actually think that will count against this. I won't be able to go into the task force to provide a coherent demonstration of how that limited intervention has had a manifestly beneficial impact on a particular area, because it will be so vast and spread so thin, it would be very hard to ascertain. So I think I'm not um discrediting or disagreeing with much of what's been said in terms of the needs to look at those other um streets. We've acknowledged that. It was detailed in the report last month. We've consistently said that we've got an ambition for the wider city centre. What we're seeing here is let's target the very limited res- resource that we have on a particular street where we've already undertaken some activity, but the job is not finished. And let's get to a point where we can identify those successful interventions to then go back to, whether it be Scottish Government or others, to say, this is the success we've had on one street. If you gave us X, we could do this on this street and this street. And I think that's just the coherent, sensible approach to take, particularly when resources are tight. So um convener, I think on that basis, I'll certainly um not necessarily agree with the contents of the amendment, although I absolutely understand uh where it's come from. Thanks.
Okay, thank you very much for your comments. Uh Billy McPherson, please.
Uh I don't think uh councillor Rome seconded your motion yet, has he?
I haven't motioned. I haven't done anything forward yet.
Right, well, I I as I say in the in 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 the chart, I I want to, I I think it's appropriate to make comment on motion and amendment once they've actually been moved. So I'll just wait my turn.
Okay, uh I'll put forward, I will not be accepting what's being proposed as the amendment. Uh take the report as written and I will be promoting the report as written. Uh I won't go into any more detail currently and I'll look for a second there.
I'll second you, convener, and I'll not make a a long-winded one. I think a lot of the points I was going to make have been made quite eloquently by councillor Alexander and others, including uh Mr. Presswood. Uh I would like to say that I think all the points that have been made tonight have been well intentioned. Um however, I would like to back the motion today specifically because of the reasons of um not spreading the jam too thin, uh as councillor Alexander put it, uh and having maximum impact and have an example to show off um to other areas and indeed in terms of accessing other funding. So for that reason, I will be backing the motion.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh Billy McPherson, back to yourself.
Yeah, uh thanks, convener. We highlighted as a group our uh concerns as to which uh uh a street was particularly chosen. Um however, um you've got to start someplace and we get that. And um the point fundamentally is, and why we can't support the Labour amendment, is precisely that, that it's a pilot. It's if it was one million, one hundred and fifty thousand, I could just about go with it, but it's one hundred and fifty thousand. Um now, Commercial Street was mentioned by uh councillor Scullen. Um we've highlighted Reform Street, um Murray Gate. Union Street is obviously uh the 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 subject of the report. Um it would just get lost if you'd spread it amongst the whole of the city centre. The principle of pilot is lost and we get that. So we'll we'll support you, convener, albeit that um in an ideal world, we would like to see a great deal of it. Uh I I and we make no secret of the fact that we've particularly highlighted Reform Street and Murray Gate. We'll have real concerns about Murray Gate going forward, given um, you know, a a couple of really big um um units that are going to be empty in the near future. But we get the point about a pilot and we get the point that you cannot spread um a a pilot too thin. I I I'm very anxious, I have to say, though, that officers are mindful of the need to ensure um that, as I say, that all hands to the pump in relation to Murray Gate, albeit slightly different. Uh uh um I think it's about longstanding empty properties and making the street look as acceptable as it possibly can. And I think that's not just the shop units. I think actually streetscape generally could do with a bit of an improvement in in Murray Gate. But having said all that, um I think the point is, we get the point about a pilot. And for that reason, we'll be supporting you, convener.
No, thank you very much. And I think that's the whole point of this. It is a pilot. And I think if we make a a great show of what's been proposed, if it turns out to be sustained and supported by Sustrans in future, finish off this street, finish off the pilot, and that could be the template for the city centre going forward. And I think that's the whole point of what we're trying to do here. And you said a hundred and fifty thousand isn't a lot of money. But I think we can actually show what we can do in the city. And I think as councillor Alexander's touched upon, we can go to external funding bodies, Scottish Government, Sustrans, et cetera. Uh we're trying to make sure active travel is becoming more prominent within the city centre. We can actually look for that funding to and improve other parts of the city centre. And I think I I should also say, as the convener, that uh and councillor Alexander mentioned a number of months ago, our doors are open if anybody wants to come and discuss any issues like this. And I'll put that offer out again. If any elected members would like to discuss the city centre in general, please come along and we'll meet up and have a discussion about it. And we can see if it comes to any compromises, see what's focused on, as you've touched upon yourself, Billy McPherson, with other areas of the city centre itself. So I'll uh as it stands at the moment, I will put forward the report as it stands. Uh over to you, Roger, please. I think Roger's gone.
Councillor Finney. Yeah, I'll do the vote. The motion by yourself and seconded by councillor Rome is that the report be approved. The amendment by councillor Scullen and seconded by councillor Cookshank is that the report be approved with the additional paragraph that the recommendations be approved, but that the pilot project should cover the whole of the Dundee City Centre rather than focusing on Union Street to help improve the streetscape and deliver our city as a tourist destination of choice. Convener.
Uh motion.
Councillor Alexander.
Motion.
Councillor Anderson.
Motion.
Deputy Lord Provost Cordell.
Motion.
Councillor Dawson.
The motion.
Councillor Elnathla.
Motion.
Councillor Hunter.
Motion.
Councillor Lynn.
Motion.
Bailey Roberts.
Motion.
Councillor Rome.
Motion.
Councillor Sors.
Motion.
Councillor Short.
Motion.
Councillor Smith.
Motion.
Councillor Tolland.
Motion.
Bailey Keenan.
Amendment.
Councillor Cookshank.
Amendment.
Councillor Finnegan.
Amendment.
Councillor McHugh.
Amendment.
Councillor McCardvin.
Amendment.
Councillor Malone.
The amendment.
Councillor Scullen.
The amendment.
Councillor Shears.
The amendment.
Bailey Wright.
Amendment.
Bailey McPherson.
The motion.
Councillor Coleman.
The motion.
Councillor Crichton.
The motion.
Councillor Duncan.
Motion.
And Bailey Scott.
Motion.
So that's nineteen for the motion and nine for the amendment. So the motion is carried.
Thank you. And I said I'll forward the report coming back to just give us the indication of how this actually, whether it's a success or not, hopefully a success, and hopefully we'll get more funding for other areas of the the city centre moving forward. Uh the next move on, Veronica, please.
Item number six, tenders received by the head of design and property. These are for your approval.
Just going for approval to accept ten tenders combined expenditure of a region of six point six million, including residential and fleet charging points, footbridge restoration works, alterations and upgrading the works of school, cultural, commercial and frontline within the city, streetscape improvements within the Albert Street District Centre and the creation of pocket parks and associated works and the proposed classroom extension at Harris Academy. Uh councillor Short, please.
And thank you, convener. My head's just spinning tonight, the excitement of all these things that are happening across the Maryfield Ward and my alma mater. Uh first of all, I'd like to um pay tribute to the um Stoswell Forum um and the wider community for all the work that they've done to help support um a lot of these changes that are coming to the Albert Street area. It has been a real strong concerted effort. Uh and of course, uh Mr. McNaughton would have been groaning to see that it gave me another opportunity because another constituency got in touch to talk about HGVs and um M nines, et cetera, going up the uh Forfar Road and Albert Street. So eventually, we will get there with regards to uh that through traffic. However, um I'm also looking to say, uh thank you for a couple of reasons. Um I'm really keen and uh intrigued to see the fact that um we've changed away a little bit, that we're um talking about the tenders. Um you can see just by looking at them, that community wealth building is really beginning to to hit home. And we can see that, that it's staying within businesses within the community. So that's brilliant to see. Um and um also the fact that when it comes to that whole active travel, um the the um woodside area of the city, um not uniquely, but a large number of people that live in that area tend to be elderly. Um some of some of them do have still driving licences but don't want access to a car. So to have charging units and community chargers is a great opportunity. And so if they want to nip out to the shops on a Saturday or go and visit the uh the rep in the evening, then that opportunity is there because those uh those chargers and things will be there. So all round, I think, a really positive night for the Maryfield Ward. And thank you to everybody for all these efforts to to make a difference. And it isn't always just about the ferry in the West End, all for the central belt as well. Thank you.
No, thank you for your comments. And I think I should also praise the work done by the Stoswell Forum as well, because they've actually been at the forefront of actually making sure that the pocket parks and the funding from the District Centre Fund, along with Sustrans, has been recognised and the work's been done there. So I think they've done an excellent job. And I think I'm going to have to apologise to Bailey McPherson again. This is just due to my eyesight, Billy McPherson. I didn't see your name, the the question blended into the previous comment to councillor Alexander. So my apologies again for that. It wasn't deliberate.
Uh no worries. Uh no, no worries, convener. Uh glad to see the Harris Academy extension up for approval um tonight. Uh you'll be aware from previous comments I've made that um councillor Crichton and I have had a bit of a concern about the slippage. And we know all the issues around capital projects at the minute, you know, I'm not being critical. Um I I my question is really around um the um approval by Perthincon Ross Council. Now, we were told uh as the local members that it was going to Perthincon Ross Council before it came to committee. I only know, uh I I and we're grateful to officers for the um the update that we were given. I know, but only from the press, that Perthincon Ross has indeed approved that. Um but um my question, and I raised this pre- uh previously, um regarding the legal agreement with Perthincon Ross Council. I asked a very specific question about um the legal agreement with Perthincon Ross in relation to the 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 number of years that we, as a result of um uh this disagreement in relation to the extension being built, agree to take Perthincon Ross pupils. Now, I was told I would be updating and that that's never happened. So I was just really wondering, and I'm not particularly wanting a lengthy reply from officers today. But what I wouldn't mind is if officers can confirm, yes, the legal agreement as well as the financial closure has been agreed with Perthincon Ross. I assume that is the case. And could they possibly at a later stage update me with regard to the details of the legal agreement in relation to our commitment to uh absorb Perthincon Ross uh council domiciled um pupils into the future?
Okay, thank you. Uh Mr. Presswood's probably best for yourself with the gospel of the go sign.
We're we're apt to liaise with the the director of um Children and Family Services, but I suspect that that aspect of the transaction is led by them. Uh we obviously lead on the capital development and engaging with Perthincon Ross uh around funding for that. But in terms of how long the legal agreement um uh uh allows or requires us to accommodate children, I'll need to re- liaise with Mrs. May.
Okay, that's that's fine. Uh my understanding was it was actually Legal and Democratic Services that were leading on that. But but the the point essentially being, I'd be grateful for some feedback from officers. I assume the legal agreement's been concluded, but it would just be useful to get um uh, you know, uh an update on that and 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 the detail that I've asked for. But I'm grateful to Mr. Presswood for taking it forward. Thank you.
Yeah, I could also get, just for the rest of the elected members, Mr. Presswood, can you confirm the Perthincon Ross situation with regards to their funding? Has it been agreed by their committee?
Uh my understanding is that it has now, but I'll ask Mr. Martin just to confirm.
Thank you. Neil.
Yes, I can confirm it was approved at their committee on the thirtieth of November.
Okay, thank you. And I'll leave uh Mr. Presswood and Mrs. May to go back to you on that one, Billy McPherson. Okay, thank you, Veronica. I thought I think that's the business for this evening, isn't it?
Yes, that's all the items.
Okay, that's great. Thanks very much. And thanks, everyone, for your support. Thank you.
Thank you, convener. The final committee this evening is the Policy and Resources Committee.
Good evening, folks. I'll not hold things up. We've obviously got the four items that we carried forward from our last P and R meeting in addition to a few other items. So we'll get straight on with the business. Willie?
Yeah, thanks very much. Firstly, are there any declarations of interest?
Any declarations? No, I see nobody rushing for the keyboard. We'll take that as a no.
Okay, thank you very much. Item two then, before his council plan and your agreement is requested.
Uh again, this is uh an update on the council plan and obviously members will be uh familiar with the detail and the contents of this. I think it's important to say that this is a fairly comprehensive document that sets out what I think are unanimous priorities in terms of reducing child poverty and inequalities, delivering inclusive economic growth, tackling climate change and reaching net zero by twenty forty five, building resilient and empowered communities and designing a modern council. The devil is, of course, always in the detail and there'll be further work that comes forward through the committee cycle uh as we progress with each of these kind of strategic priorities. Um I think it's also really important to highlight a couple of elements to this. So, you know, there's a lot of detail within this document. I think the document has been very well designed as well. So um uh absolute credit to the communications team who have supported that work. Um ensuring that we achieve a hundred percent of sixteen to nineteen year olds entering a positive destination. I think that's certainly a target that we'd all uh agree with and endorse. Working towards uh community hubs and twenty minute neighbourhoods is something that we've consistently talked about at committee as well and significantly reducing the ca- council's carbon emissions. So there's a lot of detail in here, a lot of strategic priorities that uh I'm sure we'll all want to get our teeth into. But with all that said, I will come to questions and comments. So um I can see a lib dem trio. So I'll come to councillor Duncan first.
Uh yeah, thanks, uh thanks, convener. Nothing, nothing wrong with your eyesight. Uh yeah, no, there there there's a lot of good stuff in here and obviously we're not going to ask questions and anything. But really, on page forty one, you've already um uh alluded to the uh the concept of the twenty minutes community. I'm a huge fan. I'm a huge fan of that and, uh, we have indeed talked about it a lot on this council. Uh, although as you yourself, uh, said, the, the devil's in the detail. And I, I suppose I'm disappointed that in recent years, we still see, I'm not going to single any development out, not here, not now. But we see far too many, uh, developments coming forward, which in no way fit the concept of a twenty minute community, still being recommended for the approval by officers. And, um, I mean, okay, this is a new plan that we're talking about and I just hope that we are, as a council, going to be moving forward with a new mindset to actually make the warm words of twenty minute communities become actually more than more a reality and get people out of their cars and so forth. So really just, you know, looking for the reassurance that as a council, we're going to try to, to make these, this worthy concept more than more a reality.
Well, I'll, I'll hopefully try and give you that reassurance, uh, Craig, but absolutely, it is a priority. It's not only a priority for the council, it's a manifesto priority for, uh, the administration group. So we are very, uh, intent on seeing that come to fruition. I know through the good offices of Councillor, uh, Flynn and Councillor Rome, um, they are continuing to have those conversations. I would make one point, which is in relation to just the, the types of applications that might come forward. I think there's an opportunity here for local mem- uh, all elected members, should I say, to reflect, uh, when the time comes within the local development plan. Uh, so there is an opportunity, uh, on a frequent rotation for us to update and amend the contents of the local development plan. And of course, officers are guided by the local development plan when considering, uh, plarding applications and weighing up the, the pros and cons in each of them. So perhaps that's something that we all need to reflect on as well as, uh, perhaps your comments permeating through the council as well. So thanks very much for those. Um, come to Councillor Crichton next.
Um, thank you, Convenor. Um, the Liberal Democrat Group notes that the council plan does recognise the possible creation of a national care service during the lifetime of this plan alludes to the fact this would effectively cut the council's budget by a third. Um, this is a huge change if it happens. Can I ask the council, um, why, why the council plan does not more fully address the effects on service provision, but simply notes that in the Scottish government's proposals, this would be the biggest change to the Scottish local government since nineteen ninety-six. That was before I was even born. So this is a, a huge change. And leaving aside, uh, the concerns of COSLA and political arguments of another power grab possibly by the SNP. And if the news on the HS a couple of weeks ago is aimed to go by or as any foundation, that it's probably when it gets implemented, might be a pay-as-you-go service. Um, but given how massive a structural change this will be to the council, um, should the council plan not have covered this in more greater detail on the effects of service provision?
Um, I, I'll come in first and then I'll perhaps invite the chief executive to come in. But first of all, uh, no, I don't think it should. This is a strategic document which is about the overview, uh, and the overall approach that's being taken. It isn't a detailed report that will go into each of the specific areas in minutiae. I would also probably go back to the fact that this item in particular has been considered by committee on two separate occasions where there was, and I appreciate, um, Michael, you might have not been part of the council at that time. I don't think you were actually. Sorry, my memory is not as good, uh, with the time scales in which we discussed those. But there was a very full debate and discussion on the merits and otherwise of, uh, the National Care Service. And also mindful of the fact that, um, for all, there might be some strong views against. It was a manifesto commitment in which my party were elected to government on. So they are delivering their commitments as elected by the people of Scotland. So I think that's an important, uh, point to make. Um, in terms of, I, I used to enjoy making the, the age comments and I'm not enjoying being on the receiving end of those since you're younger than me, Michael. But, uh, uh, in terms of the update, it might be useful, uh, if you've got some specific interest in the National Care Service, for officers to circulate the previous, uh, reports and consultation response, uh, which was provided at the time. And I'll ask for that to be noted and, and sent on to you. Um, but I'll invite the chief executive just to come in and make any additional comments. Greg?
Thanks, um, Convenor, and thanks, Councillor Crichton. Um, I think the only additional points I'll make, Councillor Crichton, is that at this point, officers do not have the detail that would allow us to cover in the council plan, the, um, points that you raised. Um, whilst there is legislation going through, um, the degree of a potential move to a national care service and what that would mean to the council in terms of its people, in terms of its assets, in terms of its allocation of budget, and the implication of support services is not known at this time. Once officers are clearer about what those implications are, then we of course certainly will report that in the normal way possible. And I'll take the point that the, um, convenor raised, um, earlier on and circulate the reports to you and indeed, um, other members of council in regards to previous consultation that the council responded to in relation to the National Care Service.
Thanks, Greg. You happy with that, Michael?
Yes, that could be circulated to me. And it's just really on, I, I get the fact it's a strategic plan and I get the fact that we're a half six now, so I won't go on for too long. But it's just on service provision and it's such a big chunk of what the council budget is that, um, yeah, it'd be great to talk about it in, uh, more detail and actually see, um, what we can do going forward. But, uh, no, I'll, I'll get up there and, uh, yeah, if I could get the plans, that'd be great. Thank you, Convenor.
Thanks very much. And I would reiterate the point that Councillor Flynn made earlier. I'll put Councillor Lynn on the spot. I'm sure he would be more than happy to sit down with you, uh, to discuss anything related to health and social care. Um, I've put him on the spot now, so you'll have to. Uh, thanks very much.
Absolutely. Yep, no problem.
Thanks, Ken. Uh, Bailey McPherson?
Uh, thanks, Convenor. And, you know, I, I, I sort of get where Councillor Crichton's coming from on this in that whilst this is a strategic document, the fact remains this is a huge change if it happens. And I have to say, I sense the wheels are already slightly coming off the cart on this particular one with concerns, not just from COSLA and, uh, local authorities, but also from parliamentary committees in relation to the lack of detail in this. And the chief executive's quite right about the lack of detail. So we can perhaps forgive this in relation to the city plan. But I think we really, really do need, uh, proper detail from, from government. I think they're pressing ahead with something that could cost, I think, one and a half billion, uh, time of huge, um, public sector pressure. And I, I have ser- serious concerns about that. However, my main reason for coming in was nothing to do with that. And it was to actually agree with you, Convenor, in terms of the, 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 the quality layout of this particular document and the way it's presented. It is a, a, a well-presented document. I, I think the comments on page twelve about our organisation are a little bit too self-congratulatory. Not that I don't think we do a lot of good things, but I think we should really evidence when we talk about how wonderful we are. Um, and, uh, but that aside, I would make the point that it is a well-constructed document. Um, I would lastly say, I completely agree with your comment and what Councillor Duncan had to say in relation to twenty minute neighbourhoods. Uh, and I think actually the ball is in the first instance in officers' courts who, who put the, the, the draft, uh, local development plan together when we go through the process of, um, you know, updating our local development plan. What is very clear is we cannot have an ongoing situation where we have large-scale new developments, as we have seen in both the east and the west of the city, with frankly inadequate provided infrastructure. Um, in relation to, you know, uh, we know the issues around schooling in the Western Gateway and obviously we've seen progress now. But if we look to the east of the city, we've seen very large-scale developments being, um, finally approved. Local members expressing concerns, moving, um, refusal because of the lack of infrastructure, but because of the officer recommendation in favour it being upheld on appeal. So I think it is something we have to address in our local development plan when it is up for renewal. And I'm sure officers will, will be mindful of that, given that I think we all get the concept of the twenty minute neighbourhood. Uh, thank you, Convenor.
Thanks very much for those comments, Bailey McPherson. Um, can I just remind members, if you can, please use the chat function, because I don't always jump between the two. So apologies if you've been waiting, Councillor McHugh, but I'll bring you in now.
Thank you. Um, I've got one comment and, and a question. I note, um, that there's no benchmarking for community asset transfer or housing completions, um, on this report. And it, it just makes it quite difficult to make a judgement in terms of the level of improvement that we're seeing. Um, my question relates to page thirty-seven of the council plan. Um, one of our main priorities is to build resilient and empowered communities. And I wonder therefore why we're not reporting on the number of community asset transfers that, that progress to completion. Um, or is this reported perhaps, uh, separately to the council elsewhere?
Thanks very much for the, uh, question, Councillor McHugh. I, I think you're right in saying that there's a number of different vehicles in which, uh, we report, uh, these statistics through. So specifically on housing matters, for example, that, uh, often comes through the Strategic Housing Investment Plan. And obviously there's also updated figures that go with the Housing Best Value Review Group. But I'll bring Andrea in here, the Chief Executive Service, just to provide, uh, an officer response. Andrea?
Yeah, so, excuse me, just on benchmarking, there is some data that we, um, measure on that we don't have benchmarks for. So whilst the local government benchmarking framework's got over a hundred indicators, they don't cover every aspect of council business. Um, what I would probably suggest doing just for clarity going forward is when we report progress, that we might shade out the, the ones that don't have benchmarks, just so that that's clearer to elected members. Um, and obviously if we do come across benchmarks or can make reasonable ones, we will incorporate those going forward. In relation to the community asset transfer question, we do report annually, um, information on those. So it is published on the website. Um, so we do indicate the number we've received and the numbers that, um, get completed. Um, but again, there's maybe just a bit of work that we need to do to make elected members fully aware of that information.
Thanks, Andrea. Dorothy, do you want to come back in?
Sorry, just to say that, um, yes, I know it's reported on the website, but I think it would be useful for some kind of reporting of community asset transfer, transfer successes, uh, to come to council.
Thanks very much for those comments. Um, I see no further comments or questions on this. So can I take this as agreed, please? Thank you very much. Willie?
Yeah, thank you. Item three is the best value assurance report. You're asking you the recommendations.
Again, fairly self-explanatory and this stems from the best value assurance report that was published in September twenty twenty. So I know some members, uh, were not elected at that point in time, but hopefully you can see, um, that there has been some significant progress despite the ongoing challenges that we faced over that period of time. Uh, is there any questions or comments on this report? No, can I take this as agreed? Thank you very much. Willie?
Yeah, thank you. Item four is our people strategy. This is for approval.
Again, I think it's really important and we've just reflected on in terms of the, the, the kind of wider city plan, uh, the importance of our workforce in the delivery of that, but also as citizens of the city themselves. So our people's strategy is an important part and an important vehicle for communicating with the staff how important they are, and also making sure that we continue to be an organisation that people want to work for, where, uh, their wellbeing, uh, is looked after, where there is trust and engagement and, uh, uh, ongoing involvement in the decision-making processes as well. So hopefully you will agree that this is a, a good document that sets out some of that. And of course, putting it into practice is vitally important. And anyway, the officers are very mindful of that and continuing to engage uh, with trade unions and the workforce generally to ensure that they are implementing that in, uh, the best possible way. Um, is there any questions or comments on this? No, can I take this as agreed? Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. Item five then, before he's delivering Dundee's climate commitments, you're asking you the recommendation.
Again, you'll remember that this was one of the reports that we carried forward. Uh, we, uh, there was two reports that evening on climate change. This was the one that was not time-critical, hence why we, uh, uh, took the decision to defer it to this. And the report informs committee of a number of actions, uh, since COP twenty-six. And again, I think you'll see that there's been a number of approaches, initiatives, projects that have been taken forward to ensure that Dundee continues to be, uh, a leader in many senses. And of course, it would be remiss of me not to mention the recent recognition that Dundee received as being identified uh, as one of the top hundred and twenty-two cities in the world in terms of, uh, the, the work that we've undertaken so far, but the way in which we've approached it, more importantly, in terms of the engagement and the openness, uh, in which we've taken the approaches forward. Um, so I will just bring in members. So, uh, Councillor Coleman first.
Thank you, Mr Convenor. Um, can I ask what has been done to promote the sustainable Dundee website? As I have a sense, public engagement could perhaps be greater. It's very nicely designed. Um, but what's the current traffic flow to the site and what can be done to increase and promote it?
Uh, you know that I, nor officers, will have that information to hand, Daniel. Um, but I will certainly ask them to provide it after the meeting, uh, unless they want to contradict me. And lo and behold, they've got it at their fingertips, but I'd be gobsmacked if they didn't. Um, it's fair to say that, again, there is some significant work underway in terms of the promotion of the activities. So it's not just about the sustainability banner, uh, in terms of the website. We've also got social media platforms which have been used quite extensively. And there's also networks as part of that. So Dcan, for example, that involves a number of community groups who are all very much focused on, uh, community action, community-led action are all involved in that as well. And they help promote the work that we're doing as a city under the banner of Sustainable Dundee. A lot of activities, particularly the event that was held, uh, down in Slasgow Gardens, was under the banner of Sustainable Dundee. So it's not just about traffic movement through the website, it's about the footprint that we are delivering across the city through events and activities and educational programmes as well. And as part of that Sustainable Dundee, I would argue that you would also include things like the, the Eco Schools Programme, because it's all part of that wider initiative. And the last thing I would mention is the Dundee, uh, Climate Leadership Panel, which whilst it is about the city-wide approach, it's chaired by Ian Gillespie, the principal of the University of Dundee. I am deputy chair for that. Uh, and there's a number of other private sector, uh, organisations that are involved in that. It's also another, uh, vehicle for promoting, challenging and bringing forward ideas for implementation in the wider city that help us address climate change. So I think there's probably a number of things to, uh, provide information on, not just the traffic through the website. And I'll ask officers to ensure that they provide a short briefing note that encapsulates that for you after the meeting, Daniel. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Um, Councillor Flynn, Mark?
Yeah, thanks, Convenor. I think it's only right to say, welcome this report. I think it's actually a good recognition of what the great work has been done by officers and others across the city. And I, it's all been, as you said, it's a, it's a joint partnership across the city. It's a vital, with the whole city gets involved with this. And I think it's actually been excellent what's happened over the last year since COP twenty-six. Whether it be from the start, as you touched upon there, Convenor, with regards to the, the work that was done, or the fun that was done down in Slasgow Gardens with the, uh, the active travel hub opened up on that day as well. And I think that just goes to show a commitment to active and sustainable transport within the city. The engagement with the schools that you've touched upon with the Eco, uh, project, but also the support from partners like Eden, like Emsip, and it keeps Scotland beautiful with regards to our schools as well and working with the, the young people in the city to encourage them to possibly train the adults to actually, uh, take climate change a bit more seriously. And there's been so much done, uh, with Sustainable Dundee, with the climate literacy training for, uh, officers within the council themselves, Net Zero Business Event. And you, you've touched upon the Carbon Disclosure Project award as well. I think it's only right to recognise the work that's been done there and others are recognising it as well. But I think the one that was important for me this year was actually, it was, uh, we've actually managed to work, the only local authorities I'm aware of in Scotland, to work with Scottish, uh, in Southern Electric, Scottish SGN and Scottish Water, to get funding from Ofgen to work for their local heat and energy efficiency strategy. Uh, we're leading the way with that with regards to other local authorities. And that will give us the insight to, uh, understanding the city better and our energy usage and where our waste is. And that will lead us to actually, again, lead the way in what we're trying to achieve and address all the climate emergency, uh, issues across the, just the city itself. Again, working with partners. And I think that's one thing that we have to really keep pushing. This is not something the council can do on its own. This is something that has to work across the city, across businesses, across groups. And I think that we are showing a great, uh, enjoyment of doing that. And the, and I think we're working extremely hard to make sure we actually achieve our targets, because they are certainly a necessity. And I'm sure everyone in this city agrees with that. Thank you.
Thanks very much for your comments. Completely agree with what you've said there, Mark. And I think the reality is we have been very proactive in terms of building those relationships and contacts. And that, uh, does benefit the broader city, uh, cricket story. I was at an event, uh, two weeks ago in Edinburgh, which was about financing, uh, the net, uh, zero transition. And a number of people came up to me to talk about how fantastic Dundee was in terms of the approach that they're taking now. They didn't have to do that. They made, uh, a point of going out of their way to come up and speak to me about the positive engagement they've had with officers of the council, particularly on this agenda. So I think it's a, a perfect illustration of that kind of approach and action. And it's not the same for every city. So we should be very proud of the work that has been undertaken, uh, and the leadership shown by. So we should be very proud of the work that has been undertaken and the leadership shown by both, you know, elected members like yourself and officers of the council as well. So thank you for those comments. Councillor Short next.
Thank you, Kavina. With regards to COP twenty six and the legacy, I didn't make it when it first officially opened. But recently I went to the Discovery Dome event and the Gaia, I hope I've pronounced that properly, which is the globe. There was nine, there's nine of them in the world, and they now have it within Discovery Point. And we should always take a little bit of pride from the fact that if we wouldn't know about the global challenge of climate, if Discovery hadn't gone down in the first place to find a starting point. So they're still using some of that as a reference point to this day. So I think, you know, we very much are pushing forwards, but we were there talking about it right at the very beginning. And to have that legacy in the city in the form of that globe is something that I think is really special, because it was ideally a big part of the COP twenty six. And when you go and see it, you just see how influential the city used to be in the world and how we should continue to strive to be so, because we're not just we, some wee city. We're actually Punchin', and I very much think we should be proud of some of the things that we do beyond just the city council on a Monday night. It's a much wider picture in how we have evolved.
Thanks very much for these. Absolutely agree. And punching, we will continue. It's also good to hear, and I'll feedback to Deirdre Robertson, that her briefing in terms of the talk she often gives about the impact of discovery in a historical sense has resonated and been retained in your memory. So thank you for those comments. I see no further questions or comments on this, so can I take this report as agreed, please? Thank you very much. We'll move on.
Okay, thank you. Item six, then, before he's the chief executive service planner, you're asking you the recommendation.
Again, hopefully self-explanatory. I know there's a question, so I'll just come straight to Bailey McPherson, I think.
Thanks, Kavina. My question's about the action at the bottom of page ninety-two in relation to the optimal mix of home and office working to provide the service. And now I appreciate this is statistics around the chief executives of service plan only, but I was wondering if the chief executive can just give us some information about that this has a one hundred percent progress in relation to this. And I would have thought that this was continuing to be something of a movable feast. And I was just really wondering if the chief executive could give us a bit of an update generally about the moves of staff in relation to the mix of home and office working. I'd a comment. No, I'm quite happy, quite honestly, and I'm sure we all are, to see a mix that works for service delivery at the end of the day. And if that's a bit of a mix of some staff in the office and others not, or only partly in the office, I don't have a problem with that. What I do have a problem with, though, is a comment I heard from a constituent last week who said that she felt walking into Dundee House, I think she went in about a benefits-related matter, but she said the place felt like the Mari Celeste, I had no buzz about it. It was very, very quiet, and it was like we were still in the middle of Covid, whereas other organisations, and I'm using her words, not mine, had a more back-to-normal feel about it. And I think we'll have to just be a bit careful about ensuring that the public know that, frankly, council offices are open for business. And so I was just really wondering if the chief executive could give a little bit of an update on where we actually are, not just within his own service, but which obviously this report particularly alludes to, but generally in relation to getting the right mix of teams working from the optimal way in terms of office and homeworking.
Thanks very much for the question, Bailey McPherson. It's maybe something that I'll also ask the chief executive to follow up with in an email, so he can provide a wee bit more of a kind of comprehensive update to all elected members on that. But Greg, do you want to come in with an initial response?
Yeah, thanks, Kavina, and thanks, Bailey McPherson. Happy to follow up your point separately with an email update. We have worked hard with our people and the trade unions to strike that balance. And as you say, one of the things that I'm committed to is that if any member of staff is requiring to work from an office due to, for whatever reasons, our offices remain open to them. And also the public should be able to access any services that we're providing from, for example, Dundee House, within the current arrangements that are in place, and indeed telephony and online where appropriate. But happy to follow up separately with detail about what the council's approach is as a whole, because we have been working hard with trade unions and our people to strike that balance correctly.
I'm grateful for that, and we'll await the further update. I would just make the point, I think it's vitally important that our public-facing offices are, you know, the public know they can go in there and that we still do, which so many organisations nowadays don't do, which is the face-to-face human contact, which I think matters for so many of members of Dundee public. But I'm grateful to Mr. Colgan for his response. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Fraser. I'll come to Bailey Keenan next. Kevin?
Yeah, thanks for that. It's in relation to page ninety, number of visitors visiting Dundee attractions supported by the council. And I notice we're outstripping the target and wonder if that target's low or if it's based on, you know, what was based on. And are we getting back to post-pandemic limits or post-pandemic numbers visiting our attractions in say?
Thanks very much for the question, Bailey Keenan. Obviously, there's data that sits behind this in terms of the contributions that have come forward. And noted in the report, the data from the Science Centre is also not on a comparable basis at the moment, so it will need updating. So there's perhaps more information that can also be circulated via officers after the meeting, just to provide a bit of clarity around that. I think it's fair to say that it's a mixed bag, certainly in my discussions with the cultural sector. When we talk about visitors, not all of those will be paying visitors, for example. So you may well have people frequenting some of the fantastic cultural assets that we have, but not necessarily always contributing towards some of the challenges with their budget. So I think just noting that, because I know from speaking with the cultural sector that an increase in numbers looks great, but unless that translates into support for the broader business, it's still a challenge for them. But I don't know, perhaps, if Andrea could come in at this point to provide any additional comment? Andrea?
Yeah, I'm happy to provide further details. But what I would say is probably pre-pandemic, we're not back to those levels. So it does look, just looking at last year and this year, it does look okay. But there is concerns that Dundee isn't back to pre-pandemic levels. And I think what you've said about paid and unpaid attractions bears through, because obviously Mac Manus is probably busier than maybe some of the others as well. So I'm happy to give a bit more detail on that.
It can be useful to have that sort of breakdown. It might be useful to get some kind of understanding of where the city is in relation to tourist attraction at the moment as well, how our hotels are far enough. I know that, and obviously, city development will likely have a handle on that and can produce that stuff fairly quickly. It just gives a better understanding of where we are as a city and how we're best coming out and recovering.
Yep, absolutely. I'm sure officers will take that away and provide some feedback. And it's fair to say that, you know, as Andrea said, there are challenges for that broader sector, the length and breadth of the UK at the moment, and nobody, I don't think, is really seeing the bounce back, even in very prominent cultural locations like London and Edinburgh. There are some significant challenges, so we need to continue to help promote the fantastic assets that we've got in the city, not just to visitors from out with, but to those within, and making sure that we're doing all that we can. So thanks for the question. I'll come to councillor Tolan next. Siobhan?
Thank you. Sorry, I lost my thing. And just in relation to page ninety-three, and it is really in terms of the organised, the council's outstanding service and commitment awards, the Oscars. And I just want to kind of point out, there's quite a few awards that Dundee is winning. We've been shortlisted for the two projects, the S P S A, for instance, Community Food Work Network, the Safe Zone Bus. We're finalists for the Policy and Practice Award for Housing Domestic Abuse Policy. The Green Health Partnership was also shortlisted as well. So there's lots of, lots of great initiatives that Dundee seems to be spearheading at the moment. This kind of comes in conjunction with what you were saying earlier, Kavina, about the climate crisis awards and the innovative practice that we're using. It kind of strikes me that, you know, the reason that we're making these inroads and having those innovations is not power grabbing, but actually power sharing and actually working collaboratively with lots of different groups, lots of different organisations and working together towards a common goal. It's also striking me as well is that where the two innovations kind of stand within Dundee are actually one of the two important issues of our times in terms of the climate crisis, but also in terms of social justice and equality. So I think that, you know, I know that innovation seems to be a kind of recurring theme across the board at this meeting. But, you know, there is an element that we need to seriously congratulate the council and all the other groups, third sector across the board, in terms of that innovative practice, and its absolute commitment to these massively important issues.
Thanks very much for those comments. I completely agree with you. And I think the reality is it's not a case of kind of patting ourselves on the back. It's celebrating the success of the city and promoting that success, because it does open other doors. You know, I gave one very small example earlier on, but I know even from conversations that I've been having with Scottish and UK government in recent months, that they are aware of the successes that the city is having. And it's not just about the city council's successes, it's the city in the broadest possible sense. Because if we have a thriving, you know, M S I P or Aberdeen University or whoever it may well be, then that benefits the whole city. And it's really important that we continue to showcase the proactive approach that we've taken, particularly on social justice, social inequality and climate change as two examples of that. And I think we've got some great demonstrations and examples of how we are continuing to embed that kind of practice and thought process in everything that we do. That's not to whitewash the realities. We know the significant challenges that are existing in every single one of our communities. But the fact is, we're really honest about that. I think that's one thing I often talk about when I'm invited to talk at events or conferences. Dundee is a really honest city, and that is a particular strength. We don't, you know, shy away from the realities, but we use that as the motivation for everything that we do. So you won't hear us talk about, you know, the Eden Project or the Waterfront Project or M S I P without relating it back to the realities of social inequality, because that is the motivation for everything that we do, to achieve something, to make sure that we're benefiting the lives of citizens at the length and breadth of Dundee. So thanks very much for those comments. Absolutely agree. With that, I see no other comments or questions, so can I take this report as agreed? Thank you very much. Willie?
Okay, thank you. Take you on to item seven, the capital expenditure monitoring report. This is for noting.
Again, standard update and follows on from the discussion that we had at the last meeting. Still significant challenges, of course, with construction inflation and the escalation of capital costs. But we know this, and we will continue to try and work and mitigate the impacts on the delivery of the capital plan as much as we can. Councillor Coleman?
Thank you, Mr. Kavina. Page one hundred and four, St Mary's Drainage. Can I assume that?
Sorry, Daniel. Sorry, I coughed when you said that. Could you remind me what page you said there?
Hundred and four, not a problem. Hundred and four, St Mary's Drainage. Is this referring to St Leonard's Park? Just St Mary's, I wonder where St Mary's is trying to. Whilst I appreciate the tender is not yet approved, there appears to be no indication of a starting completion date. Can an officer please clarify reassure on this?
Yes, I think I'll just ask at the moment for, I'm trying to look at my list, apologies. Give me a second. If Neil perhaps is still on the call, Robin, you've put your hand up, so I'll bring you in first.
Chair, can I confirm that that is the St Leonard's Development, which has been jointly developed by Scottish Water? I'll need to come back to the councillor separately in terms of likely start on site day, but it's somewhere away from that at the moment. It's still in the planning and engagement stage. But we'll come back with more details offline if that's acceptable.
Thanks, Robin. Can you make sure that's circulated to all four elected members for the award, please? Thank you.
Will do.
Thanks, Daniel. No other questions or comments on this? Can I take it as agreed? Thank you. Willie?
Okay, thank you. Item eight, then, before he's the revenue monitoring port, and you're asking the recommendations.
I'll just go straight into questions. So Bailey McPherson?
Thanks, Kavina. I'll make no apologies for raising something I've raised before, and that is the extent of unfilled posts. So on page one hundred and eighteen for corporate services, the underspend due to the level of unfilled posts, it's very significant. It's nearly a million pounds. And I appreciate this is a snapshot up to the thirty-first of October, near the bar on the fifth of December. And I was really wondering if Mr. Emmett or a colleague would be able to give us an indication as to if there's further progress being made since thirty-first October. What sort of posts are these within corporate services? Because I'm just very conscious of the fact, now I understand the difficulties filling posts, get all that. But the point really is, these are real posts, people that did real things. And, you know, basically, the concern is what's not being done as the posts aren't filled. So I was just really wondering if Mr. Emmett could give us a bit of an update on that and some reassurance in that regard. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for the question, and I'll bring Robert in in just a moment. It's fair to say, as you rightly recognised, huge challenges with recruitment, not just here in Dundee, but across the board. And what's been great, in one sense, has been the work that's been undertaken to collaborate with some of our neighbours on things like audit and payroll to support them and for us to receive support where those vacancies exist. So I think there's some innovative work in that's at play, but that doesn't address the fundamental issue, which is a challenge with recruitment. So I'll bring Robert in just to offer his insight.
Thank you, Kavina. So probably a couple of points. The first thing is, where do those vacancies relate to? And that principally in the areas of customer services and business support across the council. But we've been, I've been undertaking a detailed look since it came into post really, at the post, people that we've got in post and the establishment that we've got in place with a view to making sure that the budget is accurate and the posts are those needed to deliver the job. So first of all, I can assure you, there's no vacancies that we are holding, which are restricting the ability of us to do the work that we are trying to do and then we are commissioned to do. But I think the second point I'd want to make, Kavina, is that we agreed as part of the medium-term financial strategy that we would look to manage resources, given the size of the financial challenge that we're faced in the years ahead. So we are not actively trying to make sure that we spend every penny that's in the budget. We're trying to make sure that we've got people in posts to deliver the services that we're committed to delivering. And as part of the preparation for next year budget, myself and Mr. Thompson are looking to make sure the budget is accurate and reflects the posts we need and the people that we've got in post. So I hope that's helpful. If it would help Bailey McPherson, I'm certainly happy to provide more information on the specific posts.
Thanks very much, Robert. Bailey McPherson?
Yeah, that would be, that was a helpful reply from Mr. Emmett. That would be very helpful. I think it's important, you alluded to it there, Kavina, about sharing of posts. So Chief Internal Audit are a good example. I think it's really important that we ensure that we monitor these, because what we're essentially saying is half-time. And, you know, I think we'll have to be sure that we're actually delivering. Having said that, I think that's actually an example of a very sensible arrangement. And but I'm grateful to Mr. Emmett for his offer of further information. Now I look forward to receiving that. Thank you.
Thanks very much. And I'll come to Bailey Keenan next.
If Mr. Emmett's going to share that information, that's going to cover it. Thanks.
Okay, thank you very much. I see no other questions or comments on this item, so can I take this as agreed? Thank you very much. We'll move on.
Item nine, then, before he's insurance tender, and you're asked to give the proposals.
Hopefully self-explanatory and straightforward enough. Any questions or comments on this item? No. Can I take this as agreed? Okay, thank you very much. That is the business. So thank you very much for your participation. Have a good weekend and we'll see you soon. Cheers.